All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30. Let's go and call the committee of the whole meeting for June 13th to order. And with that, Clerk Bulk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Six members present, you have a quorum of council.
All right, that brings us to the meeting minutes from May 23rd. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes of May 23rd, but I would also add that on those minutes, let's say, May 23rd, 2022.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor with an amended date of May 23rd, 2022. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to public comment on agenda items. Just so folks understand, in terms of committee of the whole, the way that we do public comment is that we actually allow, at the outset of the meeting, for public comment on any agenda item. So if you look at the agenda tonight, we do have two resolutions for action. We also have a discussion item that pertains to our fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, and we also have a presentation from police and fire, as well as the mayor's office, on police and fire infrastructure. And so with that, if there's anyone that would like to make a public comment tonight, we're going to give you up to three minutes on a first-come, first-served basis. We simply ask that you start with your name for the record. So again, if anybody would like to make public comment, come on up. Going once, can you hear me? Perfect. Going twice, all right, that takes us to discussion action item 5B. This is a resolution for a ballot proposal that pertains to a city charter amendment to modify the requirements to serve on a board, commission, or committee by making those with felony convictions eligible for appointment. Just a little bit of background on this before I turn this over to the mayor's office and then to Vice President Wood. The state constitution actually prohibits anyone that has a felony from running for elected office for 20 years, I should say, post conviction. That being said, our city charter also reflects that language. But our city charter kind of has always went one step further and actually includes appointees to boards and commissions as city officers. And because of that, they too are prohibited from serving on a board or a commission if they had a felony conviction within the past 20 years. This conversation from time to time has come about in terms of looking at the charter, potentially amending the charter, and those conversations were renewed recently when we had a member of our community who is a longstanding contributing member of our community. He had actually applied to be on one of our boards and commissions here in the City of Lansing and was denied. And so at that point, my understanding is that the mayor's office took another look at the charter requirement, met with the city attorney's office, and determined that the language that you all see before you would be fit to actually change that and allow for folks in our community that are looking to step up their contributions to our city would actually allow them to do that through a board or commission. So with that being said, before I move it to Vice President Wood, Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to repeat, that was all exactly what happened. So I do appreciate that. Certainly, we are a city that understands that when someone does something wrong, they can do their time and then be a productive member of society, and in this case, 20 years is a long time. So when this person approached me about serving on a board, it was a very successful small business owner, I was very excited to have this person on the board, and then we found out that there was a very minor felony charge, a marijuana felony charge, something like 15, 16 years ago, which probably wouldn't even be a charge now, although I'm not sure. We couldn't do anything about it. This is a situation for me where, you know, certainly, we vet and we review appointees. You vet and review appointees here at city council, and I think that we should have the authority to put folks on our boards and commissions who want to serve. We have many, 40-something boards and commissions, and having these folks be able to serve those who are tremendous productive members of our community, I think that's important. But even more important is that the voters get to decide on this one, so I hope that council will agree to send this to the ballot.
Sure, and I've already had some conversations with those I represent, and I think folks are good with this, accepting of this being on the ballot. And I've always made sure to, you know, to remind folks that we'll still go through our vetting and our confirmation process. But with that being said, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Before I move the resolution, let me read the section that would be on the ballot, 5-103, appointees of boards and commission. One, every member of a board, commission, or committee established by the charter or ordinances shall be an officer of the city and shall possess the qualifications required by this charter for holding office, except that a felony conviction shall not render an individual ineligible for appointment or membership. And then that would be a yes or no vote on that. So with that, I would move the resolution before us.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion? All right, and if approved tonight as part of our council agenda, this would be before the voters on the November 8th ballot. So with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, that takes us to discussion action item C. This is a resolution of reappointments, so speaking of city boards and commissions. Essentially, the way our charter works is it establishes the beginning of terms for boards and commissions to commence essentially on July 1st. They are four-year terms, and they expire at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. And so annually, the city clerk actually forwards a list of all positions on respective boards that are set to expire, and that, I think, is since at some point in March. The mayor's office then takes a look, they vet that, they take a look at those folks that are in the positions, whether or not they want to, they make some determinations on whether or not they want to stay in that position, and then they move forward to us a resolution of reappointment. There have been times where we've asked people to come in as part of the reappointment process if folks have, you know, cited some reason for having any one or, at times, all of those folks come in, but that was not the case this time. So what we have before us is a resolution that would move a number of appointees collectively. The first is Clara Martinez for the Arts and Culture Commission. The second is Krishna Singh, who has been serving on the Board of Fire Commissioners. We also have Marcy Alling, Christopher Ianuzzi, and Mitchell Rice to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Carol Skilling for the Historic District Commission. Ronald Embry is a member, sorry, of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board. Ken Salzman as a member of the Income Tax Board of Review. Cynthia Bowen and James Stajos, Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners. We have Joseph Ruth as a member of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors. We have Chris Nicoloff as a member of the Next Michigan Development Corporation. Rick Kibbe, longstanding member of the Park Board. James Huth for the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors, and that's it, actually. And so with that, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the resolutions and these reappointments.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to discussion action item D. And this is a discussion on fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget questions and answers. We approved a budget back on May 16th. We had actually started to meet with departmental directors at some point in early April. As part of that, we asked a number of questions, and historically, what we've done is we've put together essentially a document with all of the questions that were asked by council, and then the administration does the best that they can do to generate answers, and then we try to ensure that that is part of, again, one document. We, on May 23rd, had a request from Vice President Wood to ensure that that document was actually compiled, put together, and that as many answers as possible were actually found, and we have since that time worked with, and we really appreciate Jane DeSessa, Chief of Staff, and we've worked with Desiree Kirkland, who is the Chief Financial Officer, Department of Directors, and then I want to thank our office manager, Sherry Bulk, who did a tremendous job just making sure that the wheels kept on turning as we worked toward, all the way up to this past Friday, as a matter of fact, worked toward putting this document together and getting as many answers as possible. And so what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to our Chief of Staff, just to talk a little bit about the process in terms of actually trying to obtain answers to these questions, and then also maybe talk just a little bit about why there are some questions that have yet to be answered. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, members of the city council. Per your request, you asked us during the budget hearings, certain items, certain questions, as you met with each of the departments, and that's the process. So then I believe the auditor in turn took those questions and referred them over through our recording secretary and provided them to the finance director. She in turn worked with the directors to give you some answers. Now, there are a few that are not answered, and I believe that with those, they indicated that they had responded to them verbally at the meeting, and so they felt that their response had already been provided during the council meeting for some of them. I know there was one question in particular for me that I still needed to address, and I finally completed, and that was the question regarding some job descriptions for our department, and that has been provided to the city council. So with that, that's the process. Again, we believe that we've answered them to the best of our ability, and we did, as I've stated earlier, we did meet with the city council, and at these hearings, we addressed those questions as well. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
All right, do we have questions? All right, simple enough. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, city council.
That takes us to actually our last item. This is a presentation on police-fire infrastructure. We have been discussing as a body, obviously, the administration's been talking as well with regard to infrastructure that pertains to police-fire and even beyond. And we had recently actually talked about the needs, potential solutions, and some different financing tools, if you will. The mayor reached out to myself and Vice President Wood last week to ask if they could actually make a presentation to this body. I'm not certain as to, we just actually got the presentation today at 4:30, so I'm not certain as to what is in that, but we certainly want to provide an audience. So my understanding is that we do have the chief of fire here with us, we do have the chief of police, we have a number of their respected members, and so we certainly appreciate everyone being here. What I am going to do, because my understanding is this may take up to 45 minutes, so I'm going to, without further ado, go and turn the floor over to Mayor Shore to begin, and then he can facilitate from there. Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Council President. Exactly as you said, once again, we've certainly been having a lot of conversations in my administration about the, I'd say, extreme needs with our police department and our fire department and their infrastructure. Certainly, it's been a longstanding joke amongst our budgetary folks that Chief Yankowski used to put like $70 million in our budget every year for a new police station, but it's very serious, the status of our facilities. So we had contracted with River Caddis, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, and we have John McGraw here, and he's been working on a variety of things, but this is one of the important things that we asked him to work on. He has done a ton of work, and I'm going to let him speak to it, but I think that it's time. We've got the numbers, we know the need, we know, you know, the cost, and I think we have a lot of people in the audience here, so I do want to thank everybody who's here to hear this and to comment on it, from police officers to firefighters to our chief judge. I think this is an important presentation, and it's certainly a conversation we wanted to have with city council before even moving a proposal or moving anything forward, we wanted to have this conversation with you. Finally, I'll know last meeting, the conversation kind of ended with, I believe, Councilwoman Spatafor talking about how the schools do bonds and things, and then Councilwoman Wood talking about our last two fire stations, and it really kind of triggered, it triggered us that with council discussing this, it was time to present to you all and see if we're all on the same page, and if we are, attempt to move forward. So with that, I think, John, you're going to lead it off, and then our chiefs are going to have some conversation, and then our finance folks, if that's okay, Mr. President.
It certainly is, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Are we going to pull up the presentation?
Yeah, my understanding is city TV does have that.
There we go. Sorry, everyone. Get set up to the right page here. So...
If that's not working, you can simply say next, and they can actually move it to the slide for you.
Okay. Well, let's see if that works. Next.
Faith, if you can, yep, perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you, and sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. My name is John McGraw from River Caddis Development. River Caddis Development is located in East Lansing, Michigan. Thank you. And we've been there since 2008. River Caddis was started by my father, Kevin McGraw, who's here tonight. Prior to that, he was a litigator here in Lansing for Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith. So, and even more history in our family, my mom went to Sexton High School. So we've had some roots here in Lansing. All my kids have been born here in Lansing, so it's an important area to us. In 2021, the city and LBA sent out a RFP to look for a unique partner with the mayor's vision at optimizing city facilities, assets, and the like. We responded to that RFP, put together a team, and from that, we've been awarded and then working on creating efficiencies and optimization within city assets and facilities since, both horizontally and vertically. And a little bit more on River Caddis, we've developed across the nation in seven different states over the past 14 years, on the private side, from mixed-use developments to residential to build-a-suit office. And, you know, it's an interesting position to be in to have developed in all these different industry sectors. So a lot of folks will focus on, you know, find out what you really do well and do the best at that. Well, coming up with our specialty over the years, it's really relationships, it's really reverse engineering solutions through problems, and that's what the RFP was asking for. And we thought, being as hyper-local as we are, this was really important to us, especially from a perspective of working with municipalities across the nation and looking for these opportunities of finding inefficiencies and creating a better workplace for staff around the board. So since this award, our team has been working diligently with Andy Kilpatrick, with police and fire, and today, what I wanted to do is, we have some findings, we have some pictures, we have both police and fire chief here in support, as well as a lot of supporters behind us. And what I wanted to do was, you know, I wanted to introduce myself, give you a little background in who we were, and then really let the police chiefs open up about what they're living in right now, what they're working in, and then back that into what we've come up with so far. So from there, I'm going to let the chief of police, Mr., Chief Sosby, take over.
Thank you, council. Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to come in front of you today to speak on the status of our facilities. Our police facilities continue to operate well past their planned lifespans. Changes in technology, current building code requirements, security issues, as well as outdated building systems such as our HVAC, which is heating and cooling, and our electrical require significant expenditures to update, and these improvements will not solve the long-term problem facing the city. Currently, the department faces immense challenges posed by its current facilities, and some of these include unequal temperatures throughout all our buildings, lack of parking and failing parking lots, IT issues including infrastructure hurdles for many emerging technology that we face every day, lack of advanced security barrier technologies, fire and possible code hazards in some of our buildings, leaking roofs and aging plumbing, just to name a few. And we're going to show you a few examples of the status of our building. That first picture there, the top-left corner, is the front of our operations center. The picture shows two doors, the one on the left is our front door to LPD operations, and the one on the right is the front door to the Lansing School District, and there's no separation between the two. So that means our building is not secure, and anybody can, anytime, could walk into that door on the right, even though the ones on the left are secure. The two pictures below that picture is, the one on the left is our front lobby, and it will show you that is unsecure, other than with the gate being down, there's no hardened barrier there for our volunteers. And our volunteers are there without pay, they dedicate their time, and there's no security in place for them, for those open doors. The picture to the right, where it shows the yellow and blue, or yellow and green lockers, is a hallway that is half Lansing Police Department and half Lansing School District. And in that hallway is where victims of crimes come, victims' family members come to be interviewed by our detectives, because our interview rooms are right behind those green lockers. In some cases, when those families and those victims are waiting to be interviewed by our detectives or our officers, there's people walking through the building. We've had children playing football in that hallway, all while these unsecured doors are right around the corner from that, and you can imagine how that must feel when dealing with such a loss. The one to the right with the HVAC hose is a conference room leading into our intel center. The one below that is the intel center, you can see the air conditioning unit there, and that's to maintain the temperature in that room. As you can see, there are many electronics in that room that generate a lot of heat, and that's where our analysts work every day. Bottom left is a report-writing facility here at headquarters. The one next to that is the men's locker room on the second floor of headquarters, and you can see we have those missing urinals and a fan on the floor to compensate for the heat, the smell of sewage, and the condensation on the floors due to the temperature control issues. Go ahead to the next one, thank you. Top left is crumbling basement ceiling in our headquarters. The one right below that with the plywood is also a temporary fix from falling concrete that came down on some of our vehicles in the basement underneath our headquarter building, and the one in the left-hand corner is that as well, showing that the concrete is falling. The one on the upper right is at our operations center on Wise Road. As you can see, some of the ceiling tiles have been replaced, and you can't see it real well, but they show water stains from our leaking plumbing and leaking roof in that facility, and the ceiling tiles in that facility are supposed to be white. And you can tell that the color of those ceiling tiles are that color due to age and mildew and dust and dirt. The bottom right is a storage room in headquarters for our sensitive long-term homicides and evidence case files, and currently, without any fire suppression, so you can imagine the concern I have if we have any type of fire or water leak in that room right there. Next one, please. Next picture.
Next slide.
City TV, if you can hear us, we need the next slide.
Thank you. Okay, top left is our ceiling in one of our storage, our evidence storage rooms at headquarters in our property supply unit, which stores all of our evidence. You can see the mechanical and electrical disarray that that has. The one below that is damaged to a wall due to pipe leaking. The one on the right of that, which shows a locker and a shower, is a shared locker room on our fourth floor. It's shared by males and females, so you have to consider, make sure that nobody's in there before you use that facility, because it's the only one on the floor. The one to the right is our juvenile holding cell within our lockup, which is separate from the adult lockup by law, and the condition that that's in is in desperate repair. The one on the bottom left with the black vehicle in it is, you can see, the falling debris is in the basement here underneath our headquarters, or, I'm sorry, in our headquarters building, the concrete that fell from the ceiling. The one in the middle is a floor in one of our evidence lockup rooms. You can see the broken tile that most likely could have asbestos in it, and the remainder of the floor is a plywood floor. And then the final one over in the corner there is floor stains from a leak from a pipe. Next slide, please. The two on the left top are the public lot at operations, and you can see by the picture how deep and massive that hole is, and we, you know, I fear that if that had not been filled in, and it has been filled in since then, but it was only patched and not permanently fixed, that will return and cause a substantial liability for the city if anybody were to drive into that or fall into that. The one on the bottom left is our handicap parking spaces at operations on Wise Road, and you can tell by the condition of the concrete and the sidewalks there that that is not very good condition for anybody that absolutely needs to be, have a handicap-accessible route into the building. And the final picture to the right is a junction box in our property and supply room that has exposed cut wire. As you can see, the lack of adequate facilities broadcasts a suboptimal message to the public when the department is trying to improve human relations. Historically, some operations have moved from facility to facility at LPD, and our main site of operation is currently housed in a former school on Wise Road that is not designed for optimal police work. Each of these facilities' issues send a message to our officers, our employees, and the public every day. The city should strive to send the message that it always expects superb service from our officers and our employees, and the city should strive to provide adequate, functioning facilities that pay respect to the department's mission. The city has wasted millions of dollars to pay rent and utilities on buildings not owned by the city, and some of those inefficiencies are what I mentioned, paying rent and utilities. We have currently four LPD buildings, headquarters, operations. We have some facilities at the SWAC and our range. When one central location would be more efficient, the location of our operations building is at almost the southwest corner of the city as far as can be, and for response time, when officers need to respond on a call, and if they're in the report-writing room writing a report, and it happens up at Northeast and Sheridan, you can imagine the response time from Wise Road to Northeast and Sheridan, when historically, the police building and a fire building should be centrally located. Another issue is a welcoming public front-facing building with a central location that's accessible for anybody in the city to come in contact with the officers. Parking downtown is sometimes a struggle when they have to come downtown for any reason. And then we have considerations such as American Disabilities Act. We have one elevator at our Wise Road facility that's an old freight elevator, and you need a key to operate it, which isn't exactly ideal for somebody that needs to use it. We have a lack of gender-neutral facilities at our facilities, in any of our facilities, and private space for nursing mothers, a dedicated by law private nursing space for nursing mothers. Some safety considerations, we have cadets that staff our front desk. They do a lot of work for us, they work very hard, and they deal with adults every day, and they're high school kids. And there's nothing in between them and these adults that sometimes don't act like adults, and that's concerning for me as the chief. That is something that we need to address for their safety. Some of our doors in our central records cannot be locked due to fire code issues and cost. Our volunteers, as I said before by those pictures, at operations sit alone at our front desk down there and have no protection or security from anybody that walks in. Everybody, most of our officers and our command staff, our detectives are on the second floor, which leaves our volunteers down there alone. Many of the, one of my main jobs as chief is to achieve and maintain efficiency and effectiveness in a prepared police department, and we continuously face changes faced by law enforcement, irregardless of our building. This has become a challenge for not only me as a chief, but as a, to be efficient and accountable as a police department. Staffing shortages are a big issue, retainment and reform faced by many professions, but ours is specific. Myself and Chief Sterdivant will get into details about how we need to get the best officers and firefighters to come to the City of Lansing. That's what we want, that's what the city demands, and that's what they should get. We want this to be a career destination, not a stepping stone. There are approximately 180 hiring police departments in the state of Michigan alone today. My point to that is that we have, they can pretty much choose what department they want to work for, and when... to work for, and when, when it's time to come look at the LPD and our facilities, um, it's not an easy sell when you walk them into an abandoned school, I'm sorry, a vacant A safe and efficient workplace is crucial for anybody, especially in the, in our job. We cannot expect anyone who want to come to work if we do not invest in them. As you can see by the room, we have people here, some on their own time, that came in to show you the importance of this, and the dedication that they have, and the passion that they have, and, and hopefully, um, can persuade you to, uh, give this a positive thought. So on behalf of all the Lansing Police Department, all employees of Lansing Police Department, I'm asking for your support in this, uh, in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and now Chief Sterdavant, I believe, let me first say welcome and tell you how excited we are to have you a part, as part of our community. So again, welcome aboard, and we appreciate you being here. We're gonna turn the floor over to you.
Very excited to be here. Uh, thank you, uh, Council President, Vice President, uh, City Council. Uh, appreciate this opportunity to share some details about our facilities. As you all are aware, we do have six functioning firehouses in the city of Lansing right now. I think it's very, very important to understand, these facilities are not only the workspace, but they are the home place. Due to our shift work, they are occupied twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, high traffic, a lot of in and out with our call volume, and, um, uh, it's, it's imperative that, uh, you understand that as a baseline as we move forward. I could echo a lot of what Chief Sosby spoke to, um, but to shorten this presentation, I won't get into that. Uh, we do have some significant issues with all of our firehouses. We're gonna focus this evening on the three worst of the six. There are major systems issues with the HVAC, plumbing and electrical, um, that cause concern as it relates to code violation, uh, with the modern code that we operate here within the city. It has been a while since there has been, uh, some significant upgrades. We've done a pretty solid job with patching, uh, as best we could, but, uh, again, that, uh, becomes more of a Band-Aid approach as opposed to, uh, a major surgery approach, which we feel we need with our facilities. If you look at, uh, page thirteen, we'll go through a few of these pictures right now. Uh, this is a picture of Station Forty-Eight. Uh, this firehouse is forty-five years old, and beginning with the top right corner going clockwise, uh, you see the HVAC component in our dorm room. Uh, it is very uneven at best. We have a fan there to try to evenly distribute either the warm or the cold air, uh, throughout the dorm, but it is pretty ineffective, and that sleeping area in that particular facility is typically either really, really warm or really, really cold. Going down clockwise, you see the mechanical room, there's an old outdated, uh, breaker box, which, uh, definitely does not currently meet cold. Moving clockwise, that next picture is the turnout gear storage area, which is a concern because of the off-gassing of our PPE based on the combustible level of exposure with active firefighting, and that, there's, should be some separation between that area and living space within firehouses. Currently, that is not the case. The incident of, uh, job-related cancers are through the roof, uh, in the fire service, and, uh, right now, uh, it is a major concern for the health and safety of our members. The next pic is, uh, a picture of broken and missing, uh, ceiling tile, as you can see. We're moving, uh, up to the next pic, and, uh, this is the shared, uh, dormitory area for men and women. There is no separation of the sleeping area. This is a petri dish, if you will, of COVID, flu, uh, cold, any type of infectious disease, and this is where our firefighters are actually sleeping, when they get an opportunity to sleep due to the call volume that we address day in and day out. If you notice, there's also workout equipment in that bunk room. Without the proper level of ventilation, it is a significant health and safety issue and a cause of concern. That's Station Eight.
Before we move on to the next question, I think we have a, no? Okay, perfect. Uh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. That is Station Forty-Eight. The next picture shows a station of Forty-Nine. This particular firehouse is overall cedar behind the Speedway, and it is, uh, almost seventy years old right now. Uh, if you look at the, uh, top right picture going clockwise, uh, significant water leaks and foundation issues at that firehouse. Again, moving clockwise, that's the open, old military-style dorm area, inclusive of the workout equipment, no separation of the sleeping areas. Again, just a hotbed for, um, infectious diseases, and we wonder why one firefighter may come to work due diligence, not feeling his, uh, best, but willing to come in, and it's just a matter of a shift or two before the entire crew is feeling the ill effects of, of that. Uh, if you look at slide number three, we've got, uh, some ceiling tiles that are, uh, in disrepair, uh, number repairs based on the dr- lack of drainage issues with plumbing, uh, is a big concern also. Picture number four shows a portable AC unit in the dayroom that is vented through the ceiling, but, uh, there's not a proper level of distribution of the air. So again, you can walk from one room to the other in the firehouse and be overwhelmingly warm. Next room is just very, very cold due to the uneven level of ventilation. Uh, state, this is, uh, picture number six shows the basement of Station Nine, and then the center picture shows the ceiling in the truck bay under the second flood bedroom and shower area, and significant plumbing, uh, concerns, and it's reflective in the ceiling tiles, the water spots. Um, depending upon the time of year, uh, the moisture content, uh, is a concern. I would not be surprised if we have some mold issues within some of these areas, although we have not conducted a hygienist assessment in regards to that, but just based on my experience, it looks like a hotbed for mold. Page fifteen, this is, uh, Station Two. This is a sixty-year-old firehouse, and the first picture there in the, uh, top right corner is the basement mechanical room, and you see the exposed wires, uh, you can almost, uh, feel the moisture content in that particular picture. Um, going clockwise, this is another area where we have shared shower and bathroom facilities for both male and female. There's no separation, uh, inadequate, uh, showerheads, so after a working incident, a working fire, our folks are actually having to take time to clean themselves up, and of course, during this period, the call volume never stops, so they just continue to, uh, move forward with service delivery even with the situation of not being able to take care of their personal hygiene. Uh, again, another shared shower and bathroom facility, uh, is just a big concern. Uh, picture number five, it shows the humidifiers in the dorm area, you know, just trying to keep as much moisture out of there as possible. Again, I, I would surmise there may very well be, um, some mold behind the walls, uh, in the vented areas, uh, it's just a major, major concern. Uh, that final picture is the turnout gear storage area on the apparatus floor. Again, this should be separated from the living conditions, and since it's not, the off-gassing of, of the turnout gear and our PPE is a significant health and wellness concern for our firefighters. That was Station Two. We've done some very solid work as it relates to patching and, and taking the Band-Aid approach to what is, uh, going on with our firehouses. Again, I'd like to emphasize that they are twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five facilities. Uh, when it comes to recruitment, uh, Chief Sosby mentioned it, that we are all vying for the same candidate pool across the state, across the nation, and we would really like to position ourselves as the employer of choice, uh, moving forward. So I'm hoping, um, that this presentation provides you enough detailed information, uh, to make that informed decision. We're really, really hoping that you can support, uh, this measure as we look to move forward, and, uh, with that, I'm, uh, willing to answer any questions you may have.
All right. I think we're going to, uh, reserve questions until the end. Uh, so we are to Project Design, right?
Yes, and, and actually, this is a combined public safety campus that we're, that we're proposing, and we weren't, uh, a hundred percent that we're gonna make this happen today, but if possible, I believe the chief judge is here and, and, and would like them to speak about the, uh, condition of the, uh, courts as well, if we have enough time.
Sure, Judge McCann. We are happy to have you.
Well, I appreciate your attention and opportunity to speak. I wasn't sure I'd be speaking today, but I did send a letter in support of a court building. I'm not certain that, uh, the court building, um, has to be with the police and fire, but this opportunity, um, to address you regarding the condition of our courts could not be passed up. We have the same concerns about the condition of the building that have been expressed. I think, uh, Chief Sosby, uh, touched on the condition of, of the police department, which is of course attached to City Hall, and, um, we have similar issues with the garage, with the HVAC system, with the holes in the walls, and what I think is mold growing down the wall, um, and, but we have additional concerns, and specific to the court. I know that Councilmember Spatafor served on a jur- jury, so he knows, I think you were in courtroom four. Uh, specifically, courtroom four is our courtroom who, that cannot be made ADA compliant. There is no way, and, um, Judge Simmons is here, Judge Flores is here, uh, Judge Simmons' courtroom cannot be made ADA compliant in any way. Um, it's been adjusted as much as it can be, but you cannot get a wheelchair to the jury room, to the witness stand, uh, you can't even get it behind counsel table, I don't believe. Uh, she used another courtroom that was available last week because she needed that accessibility. We have no public restrooms on either courtroom floor, and that becomes an issue at times for visitors to the court who need urgently, uh, access to a restroom. Uh, but we also have our most significant issue, which is the ability to make the court secure and safe. Our court business is a little different than some of the other city hall business because we are compelling people to come to court. They're not necessarily visiting of their own, uh, free will, and while most, uh, visitors to the court are businesslike and peaceful, uh, that isn't always the case, and we've had the ongoing issue with how do we have a, an open and inviting city hall and a secure courthouse at the same time? And so, um, that is our, our primary issue. We've had a number of issues with security that have, uh, arisen most recently that highlighted again our efforts to, it's like we're trying to have two different security systems. We have the security at the front door of City Hall, and then we have separate security for the court, and that hasn't worked out very well for us. Um, Chief Sosby raised, uh, the issue of security for, I think, his volunteers and police personnel, and, uh, we, we feel that because we also have the issue of being able to provide security. We've had people being able to get through City Hall security and get in the elevator. Um, they selected to come to the court that day, but they could have selected any other floor in City Hall that day. Um, we had someone get pepper spray into the building today, um, just that kind of concern. So we have primary concerns with being able to, um, secure the courthouse, properly screen, uh, people who are visiting the court facility, in addition to our concerns with being able to provide basic facilities like jury rooms, jury boxes that are ADA accessible, uh, restrooms, uh, those kinds of things. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we could pull the presentation back up, uh, to Project Scope. So while that's happening, uh, just, just to recap, um, you know, obviously, picture, pictures, um, it's probably a thousand words, right? Uh, there's, uh, there's a lot of things going on, uh, in these facilities. A lot of them generate from health, safety. Thank you. Security, uh, compliance issues, and then all of those affect the, the basic rights. Each one of the people who works for, uh, these, or within these facilities, right? Their health and safety, um, their, their mental health, all of these different things, future recruitment. There, there are a ton of variables that get affected from not having the basic essentials within these facilities, and all of these buildings have these issues. And so what we've tried to do was take a holistic approach at working, uh, side by side with the city. Uh, first, listening, understanding what the issues were, understanding, uh, the building makeups, understanding the problems, and then backing into some, some solutions. And from that, we've taken the approach of, of combining these facilities, creating a, a, a shared facility space. That way, there's not four different pieces of, or three or four different pieces of land, there's not three or four different, uh, sets of infrastructure, three or four different phases. We're taking this all at one time to create a efficient construction phase project that hopefully creates, uh, efficiencies, and that's what we're planning on, uh, in, in today's market in real estate, which is struggling with higher costs. These facilities could have been done a long time ago, in, in all reality, um, and into the future. Their costs are simply just going up. So this needs to get done. The Project Scope that we're looking at today, uh, involves, uh, both police department, fire department, courts, and administration. And within that, they have different areas that we're trying to consolidate. Now, the nice part is being able to take this approach from the very beginning, right? We understand there's a lot of issues, and we can hit each one of them from the very start. We can also design that and create other amenities from it that improve the health and safety, that improve mental health, that improve the workplace, that, that create a place that people want to come and see, that want, you can have a state-of-the-art facility, that when you say state-of-the-art, it sounds expensive, but it can also be super efficient, right? We're saving money long-term. It's not just a short-term play, this is a short and long-term play. So what we've done is we've gone through room by room with both police and fire, and we've talked through the circulation, the, the sizes of the rooms, where they're at today, what rooms they need bigger, which rooms they need smaller, um, which rooms they don't have, which rooms they have, and then we backed into a program that allows us to get to a square feet, and then from our work across the nation and our experience and, and, uh, relationships, uh, with delivery partners that have done hundreds of these, uh, across the nation, we, we've been able to take real-time construction costs and come up with a price per square foot for many different, uh, facilities, combined facilities, separate facilities, and really put together a program that, at this stage, is a beginning, right? Until we have full drawings that every room is decided and voted upon, we're not gonna have the exact price. So today, what we've done is we've, uh, we've included some allowances, we've included, uh, some conditions, we've included some contingencies, and our, uh, number that we came up with from that got us to a hundred and seventy-five million. So this includes a, uh, a combined facility with the Project Scope that we just mentioned. And today, I've also brought, uh, the city financial team to discuss our plan moving
Well, looking at this, we are hoping to, um, get an approval, uh, of the hundred and five, hundred and seventy-five million dollar bond to structure this facility for the three different departments. How will we do this? Well, we will, um, have a tax levy of three point nine mil, which will cause roughly an estimate of a hundred and twenty dol- hun- hun- I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty dollars per household, per residence. That's not including the commercial properties. So that's how we will look to, uh, pay for the cost of the construction of the buildings through issuing of a bond.
You tell me, could you tell us how many years that would?
It would be thirty years.
Yeah, each, each series of bonds would be for thirty years. The, the last footnote on there that...
Can you talk into the microphone?
Oh, thanks. Each series of bonds would be not more than thirty years, uh, and would also not exceed the useful life of any improvement or brick and mortar from that perspective. Um, as you can imagine, um, trying to spend a hundred and seventy-five billion dollars all at once would be... can imagine, trying to spend $175 billion all at once would be pretty difficult. So we anticipate there would be series of bonds over a period of time, once the project has been clearly defined.
So next steps. So again, we spent a lot of time with the city, with staff, with the legal team. We understand that this is a lot of money. We understand that it's a big project. We understand that it's long overdue. We also understand that we don't want to propose something that we're not going to have enough money for. It's important to know that. It's important to know that we have some things to work through, that we're currently working through, and we've got great teams to do so. We're currently working through the legal side of this to better understand the implications of what we're asking. And same thing with the city financial team. So from that, we've come up with some next steps. The goal of this project is to get it onto the November ballot. And so we have Mark here, our chief of staff, to discuss, if willing, the next couple steps that we see fitting.
All right, Mr. Lawrence. Yeah, I don't think it's on.
You'll have to use Brian's.
It's not working.
That's a trick. We are working with legal, with Jim and Lisa, to come up with resolution language and ballot language that we need to run through the state of Michigan for approval, and we hope to have that for referral to this body by the next council meeting.
All right, we appreciate that.
Great, thank you. So that just leaves our last slide, which was questions. Very appreciative of your time today. Obviously, our goal is to continue this moving forward as the project is needed all the way around. So I'd love to open this up for questions for myself and anyone else on the team.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate that. I do have a few council members that have questions, very quickly, just at the outset of this. I'm interested to know, you said something about spending considerable amounts of time with our financial team, our staff, and I understand, you know, we're only so far with regards to the process. What about our frontline workers? What role did they have to play in this? What role will they have moving forward? Remember, I spent considerable amount of time with one of our battalion chiefs from the fire department not too long ago, as well as Ms. Solis, who was a fire commissioner at the time. And one of the things, you know, we heard the concerns, frankly, pictures, I don't even think do it justice, just how bad things really are, as an example, at our fire stations. But one of the things we heard over and over and over from the firefighters is the desire to be engaged, whether that be fleet, whether that be the facilities. So I'm curious, kind of across the board with regards to our officers, our lockup folks, our judges, and our police officers, to what level either we have engaged them or will engage them moving forward.
Thank you for that question. And that's a great question. So how we've conducted our business, which is what I can speak to today, in the past, is working directly with folks, effective communication, understanding what the problems are, right? So going forward, no, understanding that this project is, you know, there's a lot of work still before this is approved and going, but once that does get approved, you know, we've already met with police and fire numerous times, and we start with holistic interviews, right, of just myself, who I am, why I'm here, why I'm the person that's helping this whole thing be pulled together. And then after that, we jump into the process of each department, right, being engaged. For the fire department, they live there, right? The folks that are frontline, living in these places, it would seem, I don't want to say the word ridiculous, that we wouldn't approach them, engage them. But we can't fully know how to design a living quarter without the people that live there, right? And that's the same thing with police. This is a big project that we want to get right, and we want to engage as many people as possible. And throughout the process, we have a lot of professionals, not just on our immediate team, but delivery teams. These teams get very large, right, create a lot of jobs, and within that, we're able to work with a bunch of different people to organize this the best way. Now, I can only speak for myself on what I would ask each department, but the chief of police is here as well, and maybe he can shit some more.
Sure, Chief Sosby.
Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, so this is, since I've been with the Lansing Police Department over 20 years, this is probably our fourth space study. And every time, we get substantial input from everyone. And I can say that because I've been at the different levels of this organization, almost at every space study we've had. And in every juncture of these space studies, I've been engaged by the mayor's office, our upper command, our chief, whoever it may be. I, in turn, when we just started this discussion, reached out to everybody in our department. And I can tell you that most of the people in the back of the room have, are very, are few of the many that responded with input. But we have done our due diligence on making sure that, we know this is no small ask, and we want to get this right. This is going to be a permanent home for the Lansing Police Department moving forward for the next 50 to 75 years, and we want to make sure that it fits our needs for not only efficiency but growth. And so there's no, no corners cut with the planning. I think now, like John said, that if this moves past this stage, there will be more and more people in this team to make sure that we get it right the first time. So the planning stages are in the baby steps right now, but I assure you that, at least with the police department, we have full support and much input on what they want this department to look like moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. We do have, again, a couple council member questions. Councilman Spatafor.
Sure, thank you. My first question is to Chief Judge Buchanan. Did I misbehave that much in jury duty that you remembered me? I wasn't even in your courtroom.
No, you weren't, but I knew that you had the experience of our facilities, so.
Do you have a question that she's going to directly respond to, or no?
I have other questions.
Okay, I got it. I was just going to invite her back in.
No. Thank you for that, Judge, your honor. First thing I wanted to ask was, do these numbers that you have in front of us include furnitures, fixtures, and filling the facilities? Or is this just the brick and mortar?
We have included those as assumptions into this cost.
Okay.
But those obviously change if you, you know, IKEA versus steelcase, I mean...
Did you quote us out IKEA or steelcase?
I did not. I did not.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're looking at 175 all-inclusive, and we're going to have to do something else further. Do we know, Mayor Shore, off the top of your head, maybe this is way too early, where the central facility will be located?
We do not. We do not. We know that there are a variety of potential options, but it's not something that, I haven't said it's going to be here. We have some city properties that we'd like to look at. Certainly, I would love it to be in a centralized place where our fire and, well, our police officers especially, can get to the whole city easily. And certainly, our fire department, Station One, administration will, the administration will move into that building. We'll still have fire stations all over the city. But I like it to be centralized, but I haven't, we haven't come up with a final place, and certainly, we're open to suggestions.
Okay, I was just curious on that. And you said, Desiree, you said 30 years. Could you elaborate on the cost per resident, like average household, or average house price of $100,000 SEB? Do you know what that comes out to per household?
The average cost, we calculated at roughly $150 per year per household.
On average, so?
On average.
What would be the average house?
Oh, 100 and, oh, 38, I'm sorry, $38.
The city assessor provided us a $38,300 taxable value by residence on average.
Okay, so that would be a $76,000 home. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you repeat that into the mic?
Sure, I'm sorry. Yeah, we were provided by the city assessor that the average residential taxable value is $38,300, which, if you doubled it, would be that $76,000 as a cash value, assuming you're 50%.
Then my final question, which I'm losing track of, so let me talk until I remember it. I'll come back to you.
Not a problem. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I have a series of questions for you. First of all, you had indicated that you had talked, John, with police and fire. Did you mean the administration, or did you actually speak with personnel within the police and fire department?
I met with the police chief and the fire chief, multiple fire chiefs.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with the unions as of yet?
We have, I have myself spoken with the union president for fire, and I believe Chief Sosby spoke with both union presidents for police.
That's correct. Both CCLPs are in support of this project.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Both of the CCLP unions, non-soup and soupe, are in support of this project.
Okay, thank you.
And IAFF indicated the same, although I think they are here. So I don't want to speak for them if they're here.
All right. Knowing that this is a multi-phased situation, and that it would be taking out a series of bonds, what are you looking at doing first? When I look at some of the replacements and renovations to Fire Station 1, 2, 8, and 9, are you looking at doing those first and then building the headquarters? Are you looking at building, or I should say, the public safety building? Are you looking at doing that first? What is the proposal?
Well, you're right when it's a multi-phased project, but this is a project that happens over a long period of time, even if there are multiple phases at the same time, right? So once we know the project has the legs to move forward, then we start designing the phasing process, right? So we work through both departments, or all three departments, and we work through staff, and we find out what is the best way to move forward, what's the most economical way to move forward, what's the most efficient to get through this project, right? Who's ready to move? Who still has a lease? There are a lot of different questions that have to be answered in this process, and that's a little bit further down the road. It's a little bit early to say exactly what the phasing is today.
So can you give me an idea, are we talking about, and I'm looking first at the firefighters, if, are we saying that they're going to remain working in those types of facilities for two years, five years, 10 years during this process? What are we talking?
No, and I can let, I can allow the city financial team to talk about what that phasing looks like in the financials, but the way that we would assume this is the immediate needs would be taken care of right away, right? We're, until, let's just say, if we started this project today, right, I put a shovel in the ground, we're two years away. So we have, in a perfect world, if the project goes through in November, we start designing, and we're between eight and 12 months of programming and design. Then from that point, if we start building, we are two years out, roughly. So we're in a, just under or just over three-year period. Now, there's going to be needs that have to be met within that time with health, safety, and the like, that we'll have to approach as we go. But we have to know that the project moves forward first.
I would add, and Councilwoman, as we've done with the police station, and I'm pretty sure we do three-year leases renewed every time with the school district for that exact reason. We expect that at any time when we pull the trigger or are able to go, we will be able to get, to be done with the lease with the school district. And if this were to happen, we would certainly negotiate leases with the district for Hill, or for, you know, for the Hill Center concurrent with the timeline for this.
When we're talking about the administration, the fire administration being in this building, you're still going to keep open Fire Station 1 on Chiwasi Street, and is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. As we phase in the process for the build-out, our team would look to come up with a redeployment plan on when we would need to reassign firefighters to another facility to ensure that they are clear of the area that is currently under work, remodel, or construction. That would have to be taken into consideration of our response times and service delivery and staffing. All of those components would be part of the development of the plan to redeploy our resources while this work is in place.
We have a figure of square footage that you're talking about for this multi-phased building for police, fire, and courts. What do you believe the geographic size that you're looking for? An acre, two acres, five acres? Do you have any idea?
Roughly seven to 10. That allows us for efficiency of parking and spreading out some areas. I mean, depends on how, if we go vertical, or if we're spreading out with the building, but likely, in this case, it'll be a little bit of both. That gives us some wiggle room.
My last question is, in your introduction, you talked about relationships. Do you have any current relationships with anyone on the administration or department heads? Personal relationships?
No.
Okay.
If I'm, I guess I should clarify what a personal relationship is, but I, no, I've met the police and fire chiefs after I was awarded the project from the city.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Kevin is very involved, I'm sorry, Kevin is very involved with our homeless, with many of our homeless programs, so he has run several events, fundraising for our homeless events, if that qualifies as relationship with the city.
Thank you.
We appreciate the information. Councilman Spatafor.
My question, I'm getting older. The question's for finance, really. Do you know, off the top of your head, and maybe this answer comes later, how much operational dollars we spend on maintenance of these facilities at this present time?
The answer of that question does come later. I will provide that for you, sir.
Got it. I just wanted to know what kind of money, because obviously, if we invest in these new facilities, those dollars go towards operations.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks so much. And then Councilwoman Wood, then we're going to go to Councilman Brown, then Councilman Jackson. Go ahead.
Just one follow-up question. I know that the recommendation is for the November ballot. Have we thought about that based on turnout, being able to, you know, educate the public well enough, knowing that we have a May and an August election next year?
We don't have a May election. I did check that with the city clerk.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, in talking with our police and fire friends, we believe that we have to pull the Band-Aid off now, that we really can't wait till August. The price will go up, the conditions will get worse. It will be a short timeframe, there is no doubt. But I think that our, I think our friends, our wonderful employees, they're ready to make the case. So everyone is very familiar that it would be a short timeframe. We have to get this, if council chooses to put this on the ballot, they have until August, I think the August 8th meeting, because it's August 16th is the deadline. And certainly, it's, you know, it's a November ballot, so it's not, it's a short period of time. And that does concern me, but it concerns me more waiting till August and the conditions of our buildings and the cost going up especially.
And then I know I did ask you privately about the concern with the public safety millage that we have, and did we see any ramifications or anything that, and when was that approved?
I wrote it down in my, it was approved this year. It starts this year, and so it's four years from this year, five years, five, five years from this year, so we're looking at basically, you know, three, four years until that comes up again. And then it will be close after that, although I guess it's just a one-time bond, so it won't be. There's, it's three, four years afterwards. I've got the dates. I should have sent them to you. But the clerk provided them, and I bet if he's here for the next meeting, he'll be able to provide them. He had it pretty quick.
Okay, thank you.
We have Councilman Brown, then Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. If I could speak to Chief Buchanan, or Judge Buchanan, and if you would like to allow any other judges... other judges to come up, I just want to talk more about the public safety that you spoke about.
I'm in favor if you want to come on. They look shy.
All right. Somebody can move over so we could allow for Judge Flores, as well as Judge Simmons, to take a seat. Thank you so much. Chief Solzmann, Solzmann, start it, man. We appreciate that.
Be careful.
Thank you so much for being here, judges.
We appreciate all that you do. You spoke a little bit about the, the public safety and the security, and could you elaborate and maybe give some specific examples to make sure that we understand your concern a little bit further, and any input that, you know, anyone would have? Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and I, I did detail some of the incidents recently in our letter. Is there a microphone? Oh, thank you. Oh, now it is. Okay, thank you. I, I did detail some of the incidents in our letter. The most concerning was approximately three weeks ago, a gentleman entered into the City Hall entrance. He placed his belongings into the new x-ray machine, which we're glad to have, but then he blew past security. Whatever was on his mind was more important than even picking up his own belongings. He entered the elevator. He did select to come to our floor, which in some ways is good, because we had so many court officers, and we had additional security on our floor, which you don't have the benefit of on every other floor. Which includes our fifth floor doesn't have as much personnel as well. And then he confronted Judge Simmons, a court officer, in an aggressive manner. He had not been screened. We didn't know if he was armed with a knife or firearm. Luckily, our court officers were able to move him to another area. Ultimately, LPD responded, and he was taken into custody without incident, but it was disturbing to our staff, to say the least. We've had an additional instance where I believe Judge Simmons was running a preliminary exam, and some gentleman showed up to the court and entered with what we believe was the primary purpose of intimidating the witnesses out of testifying, which goes somewhat to our additional concern, which is we have nowhere to put the witnesses that's separate from the accused. So we often have people, two sides of the same case in the hallway. We had an additional security concern. Someone made it to our floor with pepper spray today, and I believe there was one more in my letter. Oh, I do recall. So we move inmates down the public hallway from holding, which is of concern specifically for Courtrooms 3 and 4, which are a much further travel. And I did mention the case involving Mr., the death of Mr. Rodman, because I remember specifically that day that we had court, we were trying to get to Courtroom 3, and the hallway was filled with people. And the judge at that time said, "We're not bringing the inmate through the hallway." But that wasn't the only time that the hallway is filled with people who've suffered a loss, people who've suffered a tragedy, people who are angry, and we're bringing an inmate through the hallway in handcuffs. And in modern court facilities, that would not be the case. I will turn over if Judge Simmons or Judge Flores have any additional that I did not mention.
Before you turn it over, Judge Buchanan, you've referenced a number of times a letter that you sent over.
I did.
I am not certain that we were in receipt of that letter. When did you send that?
When did it go? Last Thursday? I want to say last Thursday. It went with additional, it also was to come with, and it went to, I believe someone in the mayor's office was responsible, perhaps. I, I gave it to our court administrator, but it included pictures of our facilities that were taken a number a while ago. This is not good. As well as, we have had two security studies on the court that were done by, I believe, the State Court Administrator's office, with recommendations on how to try to make our facility more secure. But of course, it highlights, like, we can't change the fact we bring inmates down the hallway. Ideally, we wouldn't have to do that. I'm sorry. I can provide that again.
No, I, I am, I am sorry. Mr. Lawrence, can you make sure that we, we get that?
I was gonna say, who should I forward it to? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Judge Simmons or Judge Flores, do you have anything to add?
I don't think that I have anything additional to add. I think that Chief Judge has, sorry, I think the Chief Judge has adequately summed up a lot of the concerns. Safety and security being primary, but then also being able to provide the service that the court's intended to serve. If we're not ADA compliant, then that's big, that's problematic. I've had detectives that couldn't get into my witness stand. That's problematic. We're here to give a service, but we don't have the basic tools to make sure that we can do that, that we can do it effectively, and that we can do it safely. And so, it's becoming an ongoing issue. I think that if we, even if we consider the current climate that we have with mental illness and other concerns, I think that will explain, or shed some light as to why we're seeing such an increase in the last few weeks of security issues. If we calculate, I guess, just some of the incidents that she shared today, all of those occurred within the last three weeks. And so, this is something, I think, as the mayor said, it's time to pull the Band-Aid, and they need to be addressed.
I'd only add that the altercation that Judge Buchanan talked about to begin with, that second day, we'd had a similar experience the first day with the same individual who was walked out. So it was a known to us as a security breach, and then they have the, the same problem the following day. Which makes, it, it gives you pause concerning how secure that sixth floor is, which is our concern. We understand it's a much larger concern with the building, but in the sixth floor, where there's a lot of angst, and where people are coming in, and they're, and they're, and it's not pleasurable to be there. And there's a lot of animosity between the courts and law enforcement protecting the courts, and then there's the individual witnesses and victims. We're, we kind of feel like our staff at times, and I'm speaking on, on behalf of our staff here, are, are really running a tightrope concerning what their role is and how they can best secure the entire floor altogether.
Thank you so much for further elaborating. I don't know, being new to council, to Councilwoman Woods' question to add to that. If we are to look at this public work facility, what would be the phase? Because if we're talking about three, four, or five years down the road, it seems like they have immediate need addressed. So is that something that you all have thought about, working with the stakeholders in each of these departments? And have you worked with, I guess, the police department? Is that our security, or is it someone else?
Mayor Shor.
We're certainly, with the, the court issues, I have spoken with at least our, our Chief Judge, who has relayed the comments from both of our, from all three of our other judges, and we're certainly working through that with our facilities here in City Hall. You know, in terms of our police and fire, we've been doing our best with Band-Aids to, you know, to, to solve the problem as best we can, but without, without funding, I mean, it's, it's expensive to rehab fire stations completely. We don't have the money to build a new police station. We're certainly doing our best with Band-Aids. We, we put the, the x-ray machines in this year after, I think, three years of, of seeing the requests. We, at first, we didn't, because we thought we'd be in a new City Hall, and as that didn't happen, we put in the x-ray machines that were requested, and certainly, we are, we're looking at, at other options. Andy Kilpatrick and our facilities folks are, are gonna be looking at other options. He's, he's gonna be meeting with Chief Judge. So we, we take these, I take these very seriously, and the Chief Judge is very passionate on behalf of her staff. And so we are, we're certainly going to do everything we can, not wait three years. But for the biggest, for the biggest challenges, we need new facilities.
All right. Thank you. And then a part of your, what you'll be sending to our office manager, Sheri, will include the previous security studies that you talked about as well?
Yes. Ms. Brewer's out today, but I certainly saw her email. I was copied on it, and it included all of those attachments, so I want to make sure you get that. I think that's really important, and it would have probably given you more context for my comments today.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate all of you, you guys speaking today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Councilman Jackson, then Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you. A few questions. So, I'm generally supportive of ballot proposals to let the people decide, especially things that are reasonable, and it sounds like this is thought out and reasonable. So, given that you want a central location, and it's approximately seven to 10 acres, could you, as it develops, update us or give us more information so that we can inform people? Because you have an equation that's like, given today's construction cost, which is my second question, what about tomorrow's construction cost, whether it's up or down? How does it affect the project? But given the equation you have, there should be, it seems like, some idea of what type of land, where we're at. So the more that we have, I think the better it is.
And absolutely, Councilman. We're giving you everything we've got right now, so when we have that, you will absolutely know. But not only that, I welcome your feedback. You know, if, if there's something that, if there's a, a location you think is important, any of you, we certainly welcome the feedback there, but we're certainly going to be, if, when we know this is getting to the ballot, assuming this gets to the ballot, that's top priority right now, is, is where is this gonna be located? You know, finalizing the costs and all of that. Absolutely. You'll, you'll be in the loop as we decide. And again, I, I don't want to decide without input, so I'm happy to have your input and anyone else's on, on appropriate locations.
Just a little follow-up. So, I mean, central location, there's only a few, like, areas, I don't know, you probably know more than I do. But also, as far as the, your equation, when, whether it's wood cost or whatever it is changes, whether it's up or down, how does that affect the project? And if we decide, and the people vote for a number, 170-something million, does that, how does that change if it gets better or worse?
Thank you for that question. And just to add, I'll add a little bit of information to what the mayor's added as well. In this number, we've included, excuse me, we've included some inflationary contingency. Just, let's just say, numbers decide to go up a little bit, and, and if we don't spend the money, then we don't spend the money. Right? We're not, if the, if the total project costs 160 million after everything, then that's what it costs. We're not taking out the additional 15 million. But we estimate that worst-case, and not, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, but with inflation, with contingency and conditions, that, that we've come up with this number. And we feel comfortable with that, given the, the short timing. Right? If we're talking, we start talking in August of next year, then we have a whole nother question, a whole nother set of uncertainties. So that's why, and, and another reason of the, the current state of the facilities is why we're moving at the pace that we are. Now, when it comes to centralized location, a lot of that's going to be based upon response times, and that's going to be with both, both police and fire. So we're gonna be working hand in hand to make sure that they are, the, the places that they're located are positively affecting response times and not negatively affecting those.
Thank you. Councilman Spatafor.
I'm sorry, I missed in the beginning. John, did you say you were gonna do this on a design-build basis? Did you say that? Or did I hear that?
We, we have not completely worked out the, the contracts with the city attorney yet.
And then, I think I'd just say, I was glad when Councilmember Wood kind of brought up the, when we had our fire union here, talking about the needs of the department, and we kind of had that discussion about how we build things around here. I think this is really important. I know we've, we've talked about investing in these facilities. We had this conversation in Ways and Means about trying to use the ARPA dollars, and just weren't sure we could use them in that way. I think we've deferred maintenance long enough on a lot of these things. The question of a new City Hall, I know that's been raised since the day I got here, and probably long before then. What we're gonna do with City Hall and the next, the first question that has to be answered always is courts, lockup, police department. This solves so many of our problems, and it also invests in our first responders, who have invested so much in our community. So I'm, I'm pretty much sold on moving this forward. I mean, I know we've got to work on ballot language and all that stuff, but I think this is a really good opportunity for us to really put our money where our mouth is and let the voters decide whether we should be investing this kind of money in our facilities, which obviously, I'll be voting yes on once Chris prints the ballots, but I don't know where he is. He's somewhere around here. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Sure. And I agree, and we will be on the lookout for a referral at some point in the near future. Before we adjourn, I want to, I want to first say thank you to the administration, as well as our two fantastic chiefs for being here tonight. Of course, Mark, Desiree, as well as Brian, we appreciate you guys being here. Our three judges, we do have union representation. We appreciate you all being here, as well as a number of, looks to be, police officers